First thing I'm gonna do is just give you an idea of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. It's a special meeting. And we are going to go into executive session to discuss some matters that we need to discuss, which is the main purpose of this meeting. We will come out of executive session. If any votes were taken, we'll report them out. If not, if there's a vote that we need, we have something as a placeholder on our agenda in case we want to proceed with it. After that, we will go into public comment. Public comment is pretty simple. Down front over here at the desk, there is a sign-up sheet. And I would recommend anybody who wants to speak, while we're in executive session, might be a good time to fill out your name, name, address, and what you want to talk about. I have an idea, but whatever you want to talk about. Our rules are five minutes per speaker. And we have a limited half an hour, but don't panic. The school committee can extend it. We can slightly extend it at our increments as long as we can. When it comes to the final part of this meeting, we'll make a decision. I don't know that we should go past 11 or whatever, but that decision can be made at that point in time. So having said that, how we got here in the first place is obviously there was an incident. There was an investigation into the incident. There were discipline that was decided on, and there were appeals. Most of us are familiar with appeals. We have them in everyday life all the time. You know, like your tax bill, you can appeal to the town hall. Your court has appeals. And so there's the appeal process. The first appeal goes to the superintendent. That's where we're at. Had there been another appeal, it would have come to the school committee. The school committee has to be as impartial as we can, so we basically stay out of the situation until then. A little over a week ago, things changed. Appeal was handed down a decision. At that point, a couple of days after that point, it looked like there would not be an appeal to the school committee. And once the town council canceled the joint meeting, we immediately got together, not got together, but we decided to have a meeting. Get everybody here tonight from the school committee, which is why we're here. We have to play by the open meeting law, which requires at least 48 hours, et cetera. So that's where we are. So we are now going to go on to consider vote to convene executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A, discussions of the job performance of a person in accordance with Open Meetings Act, Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A1, matters pertaining to legal advice in according with Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A2, and investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A4. Any person to discuss an executive session has been notified in writing and given an opportunity to have that discussion held in public session. We did not receive any of those such notices. So this will require motion.
Motion to move to executive session.
And to second.
Second.
And an individual vote. So Levine.
Aye.
Ms. Holman.
Aye.
Ms. Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Sala.
Aye.
Myself. Aye. Thank you. I wish I could tell you how long we're gonna take, because we're gonna have a number of questions, I'm sure. But if you could please be patient, and like I said, if you are interested in signing up to speak, now would be an ideal time. Thank you. I wasn't speaking close enough earlier, so I will try to endeavor to do that. Just appreciate your patience. We are very close to finishing what we're doing. I'm gonna guess maybe a half an hour-ish or so, but we should be back here. Okay? And so we are going through. I would appreciate, you know, some good, I would appreciate your timing to just relax on this. We are listening to this for the first time, and we are going from September 29th to the present. We don't want to miss anything. So please be patient with us. We should be, have something in about a half an hour or so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for your patience. Was that? Yes, right. Thank you. Anyhow, thank you. Thank you very much for your patience. I know it was a long time. We had a lot of questions. First time we heard most of this information, at least in an organized manner. And we wanted to make sure we had everything accurate. I can tell you that we did not take any votes in the executive session. We will discuss something here in a second. We're just waiting for the superintendent to come back in. I will repeat with regards to the open comment, the public comment section. If you want to sign up to speak, please go down to the front, and we can put your name on here. And we will be dealing with that in a couple of seconds after we take up this one motion. Am I speaking close enough? Can you hear me in the back there?
Now.
Now you can. Okay. Sorry about that. And so we will start in a second here. Let me first begin with what we looked at in the executive session. I have to be very careful, because there's a lot of legal opinions back and forth on different things, including the state attorney general's looking at the matter now too, and has issued a directive not to let out any information that would, how do they phrase it here, compromise the thoroughness of their investigation. However, to try to thread the needle, obviously, an incident occurred, which we have verified and gone through the various sources that was reported. An investigation was started at the high school a couple of days later. The principal of the high school and the athletic director did most of the investigating in terms of what happened. They discussed things with students and adults as they saw fit. Helping out with the investigation were some guidance counselors and some other, I think a social worker maybe, to discuss the situation. What came of that very clearly is an incident that took place, and it did take place, in the boys locker room, football locker room. And it involved some of the students on the football team. And whether you want to call it, whether you want to call it hazing, or whether you want to call it bullying, or a prank, or a tradition, it makes no difference. What happened to the young adult in that room should not have happened. It shouldn't happen to any adult, any young adult in our school system. So we take that seriously, and we are gonna be looking at things to try to prevent this. One of the things certainly is that we're gonna look to recommend for the school department, for all the teams to have some more training when they have their team meetings. Each individual team concerning hazing, bullying, whatever, again, whatever you want to call it, that that type of behavior is not acceptable. And if they're already doing it, we're gonna ask them to amp it up, because obviously question or the word hadn't gotten fully around. Then we also looked into the actual decision that was handed down, and the appeal, and the appeal process that was followed. And it was like, and like I said earlier, all appeals are done individually, and everybody has a right to the appeal. Appeal goes to the superintendent. Those appeals were handed down, and that's where we're at tonight in terms of where things have been. The next level would have been to us, and we feel pretty safe that there won't be appeals to us, and that's why we're holding this particular meeting tonight. Other than that, with regards to, we do have in our process, when we looked at everything, we asked a lot of questions. That's why it took us so long. We are looking for more investigation in terms of the entire process and how it was followed, to make sure everything was done legally and according to our policies. So having said that, I believe.
Yes. So to that extent, I'd like to make a motion to have our attorneys at Brennan, Scungeo, and Kresge, LLP, review the administrative response and steps taken to address the recent football student matters, and report back to the committee as part of their legal advice in this matter. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any questions or comments from the committee? Yes, Ms. Levine.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to make a quick comment and a few commitments moving forward. Now that the school committee's involvement in this situation has begun, I want to ensure everyone that we will operate with a commitment to honesty and transparency. Please hold myself and this entire committee to the highest standards possible as your elected officials. Now, one thing that I will also commit not to partake in is any political theater or any political opportunism. There's enough of that that's going on already in this town. It's not helping our school community or our town as a whole. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? One thing I did forget to say from what we looked at is that we feel that there needs to be an educational piece in our system, where we'll partner most likely with an outside firm to deal with issues of acceptance and inclusion, so that it is something that all students in high school are aware of, whether it be blatant or something that's subtle, because those things can happen. So, all right. Having said that, motions made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Okay, the ayes have it. Now we're gonna move on to the public comment sec, public forum section. As I said in the beginning, our rules are, we have a half an hour, but the committee will extend it, don't worry. By vote, maximum of five minutes for any individual speaker. I ask if you could really say to that, because we may get more people talking at that point. So first individual is, and we have a microphone right down here. If you could speak at the microphone, that's appreciated. First individual is Adam Greenman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Greenman. I'm the president and CEO of the Jewish Alliance of Greater Rhode Island. And I just want to thank all the members of our Jewish community who came out here tonight to just demonstrate the real pain that our community has been feeling over the last few weeks, because we've been left in the dark, because we don't understand exactly what happened. And so I really do hope that your investigation is able to give us some answers as well. And while I served in this role today, I started my career as a middle school social studies teacher, and worked in education for most of my career. So I know from my experiences in schools that schools have to strive to create a safe environment where all students feel like they belong, because we know that if a student doesn't feel safe, it makes learning that much harder. And we're here today because that safety was breached first in an initial incident, which we know happened because the school conducted an investigation, as you just said, it happened. And then it was breached again when the consequences for that initial action was reversed with no notification and no justification. The last few weeks have been incredibly difficult on the victim, on his family, on the Jewish community as a whole. We've always seen Rhode Island as a place of religious tolerance, of religious freedom, even as we've seen a rise in antisemitism here in the state. We want to believe that our fellow citizens have the same care and compassion for our community as we do for others. One of the great Jewish sages, Rabbi Hillel, said, quote, quote, he's one of the great Jewish sages, "That which is hateful to you, do not do unto others." We know that better today as the golden rule, something that we all try to live our lives by regardless of our religious background. We're here today in a school, in a place of learning, and it's my hope that we can move forward together, to all learn and to all grow. I urge you to take advantage of the resources that our community is offering to you, to educate your school population about the dangers of antisemitism, to educate them about the Jewish people, and to teach them that hate has no place in Smithfield and no place in Rhode Island. We stand here today, ready to resume our work with you. And while I have many questions about the last two weeks, why the reversal of the consequences has happened, what protections are being put in place for the victim, how you'll ensure this never happens again, I'll only ask one question of you right now. And you sort of answered it, but I'd like an even deeper answer. Will you work with us to ensure something like this never happens in your schools again? And I really do hope that you find a way to answer yes. So thank you for your time.
Wendy, I'm sorry, I'm reading here. Is it Joring?
Joring.
Joring, okay. My first shot was wrong.
Okay. Hi, my name is Wendy Joring, and I serve as the executive director to the Sandro Warrenstein Holocaust Education Center. Each year, our center reaches more than 6,000 students to visits of approximately 50 schools in Rhode Island. During these programs, we teach the history and enduring lessons of the Holocaust to promote human dignity, combat antisemitism, and confront all forms of hate. In fact, we were at Smithfield High School on June 4th, 2025, when about 50 students heard the powerful story of a Holocaust survivor's family. Our reach extends far beyond classrooms. We partner with churches, community organizations, civic groups, police departments, and we host a wide range of public programs throughout the year. While our mission is rooted in Holocaust education, our message is universal. The lessons of the Holocaust are for everyone. Antisemitism is not a Jewish problem, it's a human problem. Through education, understanding, and connection, we work to ensure that the past informs a more compassionate and just future for all. On October 10th, I was first contacted by Superintendent Bartz. She expressed deep concern about the antisemitic incident that had taken place by five members of the varsity football team against a freshman football player who was Jewish. Superintendent Bartz stated that she wanted to implement education in response, education that could help bring about the cultural change she acknowledged to me was urgently needed. She invited me and my team to meet with her, Principal Ward, and Athletic Director Castiglione on October 16th to discuss how our center could help the district move forward. She expressed the need for building positive team culture, working towards inclusion, and respect and courage. On October 16th, when we met, we were told by Principal Ward that players who observed the incident that happened reported it to their parents, and their parents called her. She reported that that happened over the course of a couple of days. Principal Ward then told me and my colleagues that she interviewed each student individually, and they all corroborated the same story. We were informed by Superintendent Bartz that the five perpetrators were removed from the football team for the rest of the year. We were told that they had appealed, but they were not going to be allowed back on the team. They were not going to be able to participate in senior night as it relates to football. They would not be able to sit on the bench. They would not be able to attend practices. And last, she said, they will not play in any more games for the rest of the season. During that meeting, our team presented a comprehensive action-based plan that was met with genuine enthusiasm and appreciation by Superintendent Bartz, Principal Ward, and Athletic Director Castiglione. This plan represents the impact education can have on the Smithfield school community if it is allowed to move forward. Our proposal, an action-based plan to address antisemitism, promote leadership, and build healthy team culture, was designed in direct response to the antisemitic assault. This plan is not rooted in punishment, but in transformation for the perpetrators involved, for the football team as a whole, and for the broader school community. Grounds it in empathy, education, and action. It reflects the belief that students are capable of growth when they are held accountable in meaningful and restorative ways. It brings together survivor testimony, Holocaust education, and leadership development to create lasting cultural change. This plan supports long-term prevention of hate incidents through student-led education and reflection. Importantly, this plan calls on student athletes, especially seniors, to embody the leadership their roles demand. On a high-profile team, younger players in the entire school community look to them for cues about what is acceptable. True leadership means speaking out, stopping harm, and protecting the dignity of others, not enabling or participating in hate. This plan reinforces the expectation that leadership, both on and off the field, must reflect integrity, accountability, and allyship. In this plan, we offer professional development and community programming as well. Ultimately, this plan sends a clear and vital message: antisemitism and all forms of hate have no place in our schools or in society. The Sandro Warrenstein Holocaust Education Center would like to continue working with Smithfield High School on a solid plan that is rooted in education, empathy, and leadership, a plan that can turn harm into healing and silence into strength. This is not just a response to a single incident, it's a roadmap for healing, accountability, and leadership. School committee members, the decisions made here will tell every student what kind of leadership this town values, one that protects dignity, confronts hate, and stands firm in the face of discomfort. Smithfield, the nation is watching. Do the right thing, lead with integrity, let courage not cowardice define who you are. Thank you.
Okay, that was like perfectly planned, five minutes and one second. Scott Gladstone, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Gladstone. I am the Associate Regional Director of the American Jewish Committee, a global organization nearly 120 years old. We have 25 regional offices in the United States, including my office in New England. One of the missions of AJC is to protect the safety of Jewish communities here and around the world. Personally, I have deep roots around with a long family history in state politics. I've come to Smithfield today in my official capacity, because both AJC's local and national offices were disturbed over the details of the original incident, but were even more alarmed at the district's later response. Please note that interest in your next actions go well beyond my regional office. You have a tremendous resource in both the Jewish Alliance of Greater Rhode Island and the Sandro Warrenstein Holocaust Education Center. AJC New England has been working closely with both organizations and is ready to provide any additional support they need. Your district leadership need only say yes and accept the help. If your district leadership does not reverse its current course of inaction concerning antisemitism education, then we urge you to put someone in charge who will. In 1790, George Washington wrote to the Jewish community of Rhode Island that "The then-new government of the United States gives to bigotry no sanction, to persecution no assistance." Through inaction, the Smithfield School District is currently sanctioning bigotry and assisting persecution. Please put a stop to that. Imagine if the ethos of your teams was of mutual support, mentorship, and kindness, as opposed to fear, intimidation, and prejudice. This opportunity to do right is a gift. Please take advantage of it for the benefit of all your kids. AJC does an annual survey called State of Antisemitism in America. Our 2024 survey shows that 56% of American Jews report changing their behavior out of fear of antisemitism. These numbers represent a 10% increase over the prior year. Will Smithfield contribute to the normalization of antisemitism, or will Smithfield schools do everything possible to fight back that rise in tide? Bucking the trend requires action. Please act. Thank you.
Gail Weisberg.
Good evening. I've been a resident here in Smithfield for 44 years, and I want to tell tonight the story that my father was a survivor of Auschwitz, where he lost his entire family except for his brother. Many years after the war, he reflected on the rise of the Nazism and was quoted saying, "When the Nazis came into power, they were preaching racism and ethnic hatred." My plea, and it is one I repeat today, is to never stand still in the face of oppression of any human anywhere. His words are as relevant today as they were then. Just as he witnessed the devastating consequences of hatred and silence, we are now confronted with a moment here in Smithfield, the very town where I raised my children. We're both attending Smithfield High School, where one of them even played on the football team here at Smithfield High School, a town where antisemitism has now surfaced in our high school. This incident is a stark reminder that hatred can take root if left unchallenged. Members of the Smithfield School Committee, our responsibility is urgent and unmistakable. We must act, we must speak out, and protect the dignity of every member of our community. Thank you.
Jeff Gladstone.
Good evening. I was taken a little bit by, and I appreciate very much your candor when you first addressed us after the very long time that you took to obviously go through the information. And I know that you were careful in the words that you chose. And so I was curious that the reason why so many people, or at least many of the people are here, is because there is a scourge and there is a resurfacing of antisemitism. And I'm very proud of the number of people who are here today, because our community has come together, because on a national and international basis, antisemitism has increased. You can read the paper you could hear about just yesterday, there was an attack, a horrible attack in New York City of somebody because they were wearing a yarmulke. That's antisemitism. And we are here because a young man, well, he wasn't the only one, because I'll go through and make some comments that I've seen on some information that's come out. But this was a young man who had an antisemitic act performed on him. And yet, I haven't heard the word antisemitism, or the suggestion that there was anything other than bullying, or hazing, or something like that. And that concerns me, because from what I understand, there was a lot of corroborating evidence that supports the fact that there was involvement of antisemitism. And if you can't say the word antisemitism in addressing this crowd under these circumstances, then I would suggest we still have a problem. It's something we have to face, it's something we have to say. If you don't believe it was antisemitism, say it, because we sure do. When I came here tonight, I was handed a document, and I spent some time reading it, and it's called Stick to the Facts, and I guess that it was provided by some people from the local community. And when I read it, I was, I was taken aback, quite frankly. And I'm gonna read you a couple of the things, because if this is true, then there has been a longstanding problem in this high school that has been going on, whether it's antisemitism or not, but there's a problem. And the fact that it's been going on unchecked suggests a real issue that goes deep. This behavior is not targeted and happens, and happens, oh, this behavior is not targeted and happens to whoever uses the bathroom. Then it goes on, and it says, "The public has been misled by the district administration due to the inaccurate information shared," and it talks about the fact that there's an unsafe environment. And the suggestion is, is that the unsafe environment is because of this, I guess, the subjugation of the people who actually perpetrated the act. We have a young man who suffered a terrible wrong, and yet, he's made to feel as though he's perpetrated and caused these young men a wrong. He's the one who needs protection. I haven't heard anything about what's going to happen to help this young man. Imagine he was told that there wasn't going to be the problem of him having to see these other boys who did this to him because they were suspended. Imagine- Imagine how he felt on the day that he got back to football practice and those boys were there. He wasn't told about it beforehand? How is that treating a young man who undergoes this type of an attack? How is that caring for this boy? And how is it that, at least from the facts that I read here from the parents, this has gone on for years and years, and it's going on unchecked? May I suggest that maybe things like this are good sometimes because it brings to a head and it brings to people's attention real endemic problems, and there are real endemic problems. And you know what else there is? There's a problem with antisemitism. I'm saying it, the word antisemitism. I'm asking you, please, to let's work together, you've had offers, but please work together so that we can properly address this issue. Thank you.
Remind everybody of the five-minute rule. Thank you. Maria Friedman.
Good evening, members of the school committee, administrators, and members of our community. My name is Maria Friedman, and I'm the Executive Director of the Rhode Island Coalition for Israel, a local coalition of thousands of Jews and Christians dedicated to combating antisemitism in our state and educating about Israel. I'm here tonight because of the recent alleged antisemitic hazing incident involving the Jewish student on the football team. As representatives of Jews and Christians throughout the state, including in Smithfield, we demand accountability and answers from the Smithfield School Administrators. How was the decision made to reinstate the students on the team? Who made that decision? How did you arrive at it? Also, and more importantly, exactly what were the antisemitic slurs or remarks that were said during the incident? What is being done to help the Jewish student if there were antisemitic remarks said, or if this was just hazing? There has not been concrete evidence shared by your administration, and rumors and hearsay on both sides that need clarification via an independent third-party investigation. We urge you to conduct this independent investigation and to be forthcoming with this information so that we can get to the bottom of this and have a clear understanding of what happened. While our organization takes allegations of antisemitism or Jew hatred very seriously and has been on the forefront of fighting antisemitic acts throughout our state, we need more facts and evidence in this case. While the details are still being reviewed, what's clear is that this community is hurting. Jewish students and families are looking to you, their leaders, and the school administration to demonstrate that antisemitism in any form will not be tolerated in our schools. Adopting the IHRA, or International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, Working Definition of Antisemitism, is a crucial step towards that goal. This definition is recognized by the U.S. State Department, over 40 countries, and hundreds of educational institutions. It provides clear, consistent language to identify and address antisemitism when it appears. It doesn't restrict speech or academic inquiry. It simply helps educators, administrators, students, and everyday people recognize when rhetoric or behavior crosses the line from legitimate discourse into hate. We can't address what we don't define. Without a shared understanding of what antisemitism looks like, our responses risk being inconsistent or incomplete. This IHRA, Working Definition of Antisemitism, gives our schools a tool, a framework, to ensure that when Jewish students say they feel targeted or unsafe, their experiences are not minimized or misunderstood. Adopting this definition is not a political act, it's a moral one. It says to every student in this district, "You belong, you are safe, you will be seen and heard." This definition is widely adopted by over 1,100 entities worldwide, including by the Jewish Alliance of Rhode Island and the Sandra Bernstein Holocaust Education Center, the United Nations Secretary General, universities, and 37 states and counting. This definition offers succinct explanations and practical examples that can help anyone recognize antisemitism. I urge this committee to take this important step to join the growing list of school districts across the country who have chosen clarity over confusion, education over ignorance, and action over silence, and in general, to make a commitment to increase education on antisemitism or Jew hatred, which has risen over 200% in New England. Thank you for your time and for your leadership in creating schools that truly uphold dignity and respect for all. Thank you.
Jeffrey Innber? Am I close?
You got it.
Good evening to the committee. Thank you very much. I promise I won't take five minutes. Okay? I don't feel like I need it. Everyone had a lot of patience this evening. You should all congratulate yourselves, and remember that civil discourse is very, very Hazing, initiation, beasting, bastardization, deposition, all refer to an activity expected of someone in joining or participating in a group that humiliates, degrades, abuses, or endangers them regardless of a person's willingness to participate. Can we agree on that? I have not read it, but I believe the department has a policy on that. Right here, in a document created by families, alumni, parents of student athletes. Parents can only be the best advocate for their children. Their children only have their parents to advocate for them. But the second line starts with, "Healing starts with honesty." And if they believe that, we should get to some honest answers. It also says, "Truth does not fear transparency." That is your charge, and I believe everyone in this room believes you will take that into account. But let's go back to hazing for a second, and the community and the district's policy on hazing. Locker room behavior has persisted for over a decade. So let's take it again. "Hazing has persisted for over a decade and is present across multiple sports." Your school kids and their parents are admitting to that. How you let this document go out today is beyond me. Right? I have no idea. Locker room behavior has frequently included the blocking of the main door of the communal bathroom. So let's say it a different way. "Hazing has frequently included the blocking of the main door of the communal bathroom." I thought I was going to get a second round of applause. Okay. "None of the individuals involved in the reported locker room behavior were aware of the student athlete's religious affiliation." I do believe that the Smithfield community, football community family, is united in the belief that all prejudice, including antisemitism, is intolerable and unacceptable. What do you believe? Thank you.
Thank you. The committee will need to take a motion to extend another hour. If you could, motion.
Do we extend a little comment for one hour?
A second? Any questions? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're good for an hour. Let's see, we are now on to Dr. Andrew Bostrom.
That's good. You got it. My name is Dr. Andrew Bostrom. I'm a Jew and a retired Brown University academic physician, who has also published extensive research on antisemitism for the past 20 years. My wife is Jewish and still a very active Brown University academic physician. Although we live in Shepachet, and we're probably the only Jewish family out there as far as I know, our family attended Temple Emanuel in Providence, where my daughter had her bat mitzvah and my son his bar mitzvah. Restore adult supervision in the Smithfield High School locker room, and no more locker room antics, please. But I am far more concerned that we be completely accurate before leveling charges of quote "targeted antisemitic slurs" at 17-year-old man-children football players. And a month after the alleged incident, not a shred of hard evidence, video, audio, in this age of ubiquitous recording devices, has been produced to prove the claim that quote "antisemitic slurs" were hurled during the stupid locker room antics. It is unacceptable to make serious public allegations in the absence of such hard evidence. Indeed, to illustrate the morally repugnant hypocrisy of those at the forefront hysterically promoting the unproven allegations, that is, the Holocaust Center and the Greater Jewish Alliance so-called leadership, this same leadership, for nine months ongoing, has ignored hard, incontrovertible evidence, video recordings of public sermons redolent with virulent Jew hatred targeting all Jews preached repeatedly by imams from the Islamic Center of Rhode Island. For example, citing antisemitic verses from the Quran, their Muslim audience was told, quote, "The Jews," no, not Israel, not the IDF, not Netanyahu, "the Jews were killing the prophets even." So why is it a surprise to us if they are killing Muslims today in Gaza, an act of genocide? And also simply, and this was just on May 30th, "The Jews," not anyone else, "the Jews have reduced their religion to an ethnic identity that they use to justify slaughter of innocent people." Such carefully documented hatred spewed here in Rhode Island by adult Muslim men of religion is orders of magnitude more dangerous, yet it is actively ignored by the same Jewish leadership demonizing 17-year-olds over unsubstantiated allegations. That Jewish leadership behavior, state representative Bea Ackerman, if you're here or wherever the hell you are, is a true shanda, which means ashamed. Would you want to do a student in your class?
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, let's keep things as civil as we can. Let's see, we are now, Susan Benish?
She's not here.
Not here? Okay. We'll move to Gary Lee. Tracy Amadian?
My name is Tracy Amadian, and I'm a Smithfield resident. And as you know, at the last committee meeting, I gave testimony there how this incident made me feel unsafe, and it made me feel anxious, and I went on to explain that I value the equality of all, and I want my community to reflect that. And I asked you to, that I wanted to meet with you. And so you gave me the guidance to submit an agenda to the Superintendent Bartz, which I did last Friday, and I'll read that to you. I have not heard a reply to that as of yet. I do understand that you're busy. Dear Superintendent Bartz, being completely open-hearted, I have been learning nonviolent communication by Marshall Rosenberg, which is a method and philosophy which focuses on a belief that all parties involved in any situation are able to have their needs met. It is a way of communicating which employs empathetic listening skills to build rapport and find ways to resolve conflicts in service to the needs of all involved. And I gave a link to the website, the Center for Nonviolent Communication, as a reference. My desire is to share this technique in the hopes that you might find it to be relevant and helpful in our schools. As I shared with you during my testimony at the school committee meeting, I have a desire for my community to reflect my need for safety and respect. I believe this is a pathway to that end, and I would be really happy to meet with you to talk more about that. Thank you.
I know it's Claude, is it LeFave?
Yes.
Claude, you here? Not here?
Claude, please.
Okay. Barry Dolinger?
Oh, there it is. Hi, thank you for taking the time this evening. My name is Barry Dolinger, and I'm the President of the Board of Rabbis of Greater Rhode Island. I won't rehash what others said, but in the last week, I received dozens of communications from Jewish students, teachers, and staff at schools across the state in my role, concerned that this sends a message that it is open season on Jews. And I want to read a little bit from Judith Herman's Trauma and Repair. Judith Herman is one of the experts on what happens when a traumatic incident happens and how communities ought to respond. She writes, "If trauma is truly a social problem, and indeed it is, recovery cannot simply be a private individual matter. The wounds of trauma are not merely those caused by the perpetrators of violence and exploitation. The actions or inactions of bystanders, all those who are complicit in or who prefer not to know about the abuse or who blame the victims, often cause even deeper wounds. These wounds are part of the social ecology of violence in which crimes against subordinated and marginalized people are rationalized, tolerated, or rendered invisible. If trauma originates in a fundamental injustice, full healing requires repair through some measure of justice from the larger community." If you want to know what victim blaming looks like, if we want to know what an ecology of violence looks like, if we want to know why there is a longstanding problem of abusing whoever goes into the bathroom, then we look no further than the statements of the team supporters themselves in the document that was distributed to us tonight. This is not a community that is ready to come to face with what has happened, a vicious assault against a minority member who has complained that it was a hate crime based on the things that were uttered and the nature of the attack. We like to believe victims when they describe an attack, and when the perpetrators suggest otherwise, we have a choice, believe the perpetrators or to believe and support the victim. The most upsetting, you know, I was part of a high school in 2003, Mebham High School, where there was a vicious hazing attack. I was a proud member of the band, and I looked forward to the football games every Saturday at that time. And one of the victims of the attack, there were three, was a black student, and there was questionable racial animus involved as well according to that victim. The school removed the coaches from coaching, they kept their teaching jobs. The next football season was canceled, and there was a training done for all members of the school community about hatred and how to respond. The responses were not punitive. The students who were involved in the attack helped to lead the training that occurred and went into classrooms. Lives were not ruined, but people learned lessons and accountability was real. It is my request as a rabbi on behalf of my fellow clergy and so many we represent that you have the opportunity tonight to send a message not just to this victim, but to so many other would-be victims, Jewish people who are afraid, as we heard mentioned, who are who are looking to this decision, to understand. Will victims be believed? Will Jewish students and staff be protected? Or when we complain, will we be gaslit, blamed, and further faulted? This secondary trauma is wholly within your hands. You have the responsibility to be the proverbial and real adults in the room and to help heal. No one will benefit, not the students, not the victim, from inaction. I urge you to do the right thing, and thank you.
Lillian Birch?
Good evening. I'm going to add just my two cents worth briefly to what's already been said. Hatred has never accomplished anything of value. I know way too much about hatred because my parents were Holocaust survivors. I lost my paternal grandparents because of hatred. I lost my maternal grandparents because of hatred. I lost several aunts and uncles because of hatred. Countless cousins, et cetera, et cetera. Hatred has never, ever, ever accomplished anything of value. So when I found out about this hazing incident, I was so very pleased that education was the answer. Nothing punitive, just education. The more we know about each other, the more we understand each other, where we come from, our cultures, our background, our history, the more bonds we can build between us. So I am here to ask you to reinstate the non-punitive educational program that was devised so that we can build bridges. What kind of a message are we sending to those students and to the community if hatred is shoved under the table? Let's bring it out into the light, and let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gary. Rebenowitz, am I having that right? I got it, okay.
Good job.
I did it, okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out. I am... My name is Gary Rebenowitz. I assure you, I am not as measured or polished as some of the fellow speakers here tonight. I am the grandson of Holocaust survivors and the son of a mom who was born as a refugee due to the Holocaust. I have worked in education as a coach, a teacher, an advisor, a camp director, and administrator for over a quarter century. I have had to kick the best player off my team for something far less nefarious than what has transpired here. Far less nefarious. But here we are, a lot of folks, a lot of wasted time, and for what? Because a handful of adults decided to ignore one of the only basic tenets of education. Paraphrase Hyman Roth in Godfather II. "This is the business you have chosen, and the business you have chosen dictates that you assure the safety of all the students. Everything else is gravy. Learn, go to college. If you can't ensure the safety of your students, why are you working in this business? It makes no sense." So ask any parent when they leave the house. Kids come to our camp for an entire summer, two months. You ask any parent, what do they care about? There's two answers: safety and happiness. And that's it. And I know you can't assure happiness because each person is their own, but you can do your best to ensure safety. After listening to the comments right when you came out of the executive committee and how you danced around using the word antisemitism, that was really difficult to hear. That was embarrassing. Victim not worthy of your care or understanding. Then we get to this abomination? Seriously? I mean, admission of guilt printed, something that eviscerates anyone associated with Smithfield Schools for over a decade, just completely says essentially that no adult who has been employed at Smithfield School District for a decade has cared about the students. Right here for you to read. And now we are here. This is where we land after that. An antisemitic horror show that has garnered national news. Also, any debate coaches here? If you are, you're familiar with the Mott &amp; Bailey fallacy? Look it up, Mott &amp; Bailey, right? The confluence of two positions where you admit to the one that isn't so bad so people don't talk about the one that is so bad. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniela Volkaniski? Going once, Daniela, it looks like, I'm pretty sure it's Volkaniski. Okay, move on to Michael Mangili. Stephen Volk.
Good evening. As a resident of Smithfield and a member of the Jewish community, I am saddened and angered by the disgusting behavior of the students involved in this incident and by the inadequate actions of the town. One of the great things about sports is that it teaches teamwork and leadership. In school sports, the senior members of the team are typically looked up to for their leadership. In this case, the students who participated in this horrific incident failed in their role as teammates and leaders. For that, they do not deserve to be on the team and should be immediately and permanently removed. There should be no acceptance by our community of their disgusting behavior toward a fellow student and teammate. We should also not accept the lack of values and judgment by certain town officials whose actions demonstrated that they do not know right from wrong. This is a very simple case to make a ruling on. If the officials involved were not able to handle this case correctly, how can we trust that they will be able to make the right decision in more complex cases? The town needs to take appropriate actions against the officials involved. Finally, it should be recognized that removing the guilty students from the team would not be the end of the world for them. Instead, I hope that the proper resources will be applied to these students so that they can learn from their mistake and go on to live productive, responsible, and hate-free lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora Solomon?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nora Solomon. I live in Smithfield. I have an eighth grader in Gallagher Middle School and a ninth grader in Smithfield High School. My husband and I are Jewish. We are raising our children Jewish. Like most people here, I'm troubled by this situation. I cannot understand how the educational system allowed the propagation of such hate. Whether this is the result of the lack of disseminated information, pressure from involved parents, or whether you simply dislike Jewish people, it doesn't really matter at this point because the damage is done. I want to remind you of Eastern Europe in the first half of the 20th century. This was not an ancient civilization. While people did not have access to modern technology like cell phones and the internet, culturally, they lived much as we do today. Parents worked to support their families. They sent their children to school. Children played sports, hung out with their friends, and went to the movies. Yet somehow cracks emerged in society's moral code which allowed hatred to spread. By the time World War II started, the hatred was seemingly impossible to curb, resulting in the death of millions. While this hazing incident does not rise to the level of World War II action, it is important to note that this is how hatred and the spread of hatred starts. For better or worse, high school seniors, football players in particular, are role models for the rest of the school. We are at a crossroads. By failing to take appropriate action, you are allowing an entire student body to believe that this hatred is acceptable. You are sending seniors out of our town and into the real world as bearers of hate. You are sending a dangerous message that this type of belief and action is satisfactory. It is not. As a society, we need to do better. You need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby Rosenstein?
Thank you. On my way out tonight, my older daughter asked me where I was going, and my answer to her was that any time you see something like this happen, it's important to speak up and stand up against any form of hate, bullying, and antisemitism, period. I'm a fourth-generation Rhode Islander. My parents are actually here, apparently filming me. But I've missed, unfortunately, missed a lot of dinners and bedtimes with my kids over the past seven years. I don't know if everyone here is familiar, there was an incident in 2018 in Pittsburgh at the Tree of Life synagogue, where gunmen came in during services and killed, murdered, 11 Jews just because they're Jewish in their house of worship. I don't know, you know, what everyone else's religious affiliation is. If you haven't been to a synagogue, or a Jewish school, or Jewish summer camp in the last seven years, you should go. It is not like a church. There is someone that looks like that standing outside, sometimes multiple people, and also volunteers from the community that do it. So people from the community take nights, weekends, out of their personal time to train just to stand outside to make sure that the rest of the people inside are safe. This is where I send my children to a Jewish school. This is the unfortunate reality of their school. It is full lockdown all the time at their school. It's a really tough place or way to live. I know, and I've visited churches. My parents said they went to a church yesterday for something. Walked right in the front door. Doesn't happen in Judaism anywhere in the world at this point. And as the last speaker said much more eloquently than I'm able to, because I didn't have anything prepared, is, you know, unchecked antisemitic incidents lead to the normalization of hate and the permission for further violent attacks. And that is really a concern. And we want Rhode Island, we want all of our towns, we want this whole country and the whole world just to return to a place where that's not the case. Before I finish, there was a woman here earlier who had to leave during the break, but she texted me something she briefly wanted, she wanted to say. She said, this is, her name is Alona Berman, so I'm quoting her at this point. "This event and the response of the school and community has been painful. We need to come together and learn from this. That comes with accountability. I immigrated from Ukraine in the 90s because of antisemitism, where my sister was attacked at school just for being Jewish. To have this happen in our Rhode Island community 30 years later is extremely difficult. I've sent my two kids to a Jewish day school and now to a private middle school to keep them in a bubble and avoid this trauma. Our public schools need to protect all of our children, and it starts with the school committee and school administration making this a priority and responding in the right manner. Public schools should be a safe space for everyone." Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Lenore?
My name is Sandy Lenore. I'm a former educator at Anna McCabe in Pleasant View for 26 years, the parent of two Smithfield High School graduates, a resident of Smithfield, and passionate cheerleader for all children. I sub in town as well as co-direct PVE's Panda Players Drama Club, and I'm Jewish. Hazing, yes. Antisemitic comments, some here say yes, some here say no. I don't have all the information, and many don't. I'm not here to point fingers. I'm here to move forward and help everybody move forward. Many mistakes in the investigation were made, and I'm trusting the process in addressing them. For me, the most important issue is what we can do to ensure this does not happen again. Should there be consequences for any students involved in hate? Absolutely. There's a palpable lack of student consequences at all our schools, as evidenced in the rise of behavioral issues. Addressing these incidents with transparency and holding students accountable in a fair and sensitive way reinforces the values that we want to instill. Navigating a world filled with hate and intolerance can feel daunting. The impact of social media amplifies this challenge for our students, exposing them to ideas and harassing far beyond school walls. Incidents like this present a crucial opportunity, and you've heard it all night, to educate. About history, inclusion, acceptance, teaching them principles that strengthen our schools and in turn our town. It's time to stop fueling the fire. As my parents always taught me, if you have something to complain about, come to the table with solutions. We need to put the fire out, and we need to do it together. Not just the school committee, not just the teachers, not all of us, for our community. So here are my suggestions. What can we do? One, we inform. Let's revise the handbooks to include clear guidelines on specific behaviors with consequences for each. And I went through the handbook on the Smithfield website. We did not check off many of the boxes. And that's okay, because you guys are allowed to learn. It's a learning for all of us. It needs to have the clear guidelines for specific behaviors and the consequences for each. Hazing, racial or religious slurs, those are under a Level 2 offense, and they need to have consequences for each. So it's really clear for parents, and parents should have to sign off on handbooks. And I don't know, I don't know if they already do, do they? Do they have to sign off on... They do, okay. Well, then we should make sure that they're really signing off on everything. Number two, we educate. Mandatory anti-bias student workshops worth credits needed to graduate. I suggest a high school mini-course that all students take each year. Topics will vary over three years, while in the fourth year, we ask the seniors to lead the freshmen. We learn by doing, and we lead by example. Number three, we involve. Students complete a community service project involving current issues... Students complete a community service project involving current issues that cause discord. This could be part of the senior portfolio. Writers and poets can write, musicians can compose, artists can create, young teachers can teach. We share the theme via a showcase evening for the town to celebrate the children and the leaders that we're creating, and we guide and stand with them in their leadership. Number four, we communicate to each other to report, to share, and to learn, and we keep all connections open. And finally, number five, we ask for help. From adults to adults, adults ask help from professional agencies, kids can ask adults, and we problem solve together. Let's lead by example and enforce accountability and consequences in our schools as they are fit. As we teach our children, there is no elevator to success. You have to take the stairs. We've got this, Smithfield. Thank you.
Good evening. Personally, my name is Anne Goldstein. My husband Jerry and I have lived here for almost 24 years on a property we named Shalom Acres, Peaceful Acres. That's how we experienced Smithfield. But tonight, I'm standing before you in my professional identification, Anne Frank. A licensed clinical psychologist, yes. Anne Frank is my birth name, and I cannot be silent in the face of hatred and antisemitism. As the late Martin Luther King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." What mattered in the last few weeks is that I heard the door whistle. The target of door whistling feels triggered while those around them heard regular words. As the target, you might give the manipulator the benefit of the doubt because of the plausible deniability, or you might recognize the manipulation, but if you speak up in front of the group, you look insane. They heard something else that sounded totally normal. Using my clinical skills, I test. I am not insane. What happened in this high school, in this school district, in this town is not normal, not acceptable. My parents used to say, wrong is wrong even if everyone is doing it. Right is right even if no one is doing it. I scribbled here because I did not intend to get up to speak, but stick to the facts. This affront caused me to sit back and scribble some notes to share with you. Antisemitism, bullying, hazing, desensitizing, bad behavior is not right, and I would love to understand why there was a decision that was reversed. This is a critical gathering, a teaching moment, about what happens when individuals excuse the inexcusable, tolerate the intolerable, overlook that which should be examined closely. There should be consequences for bad behavior for the students and the staff and the administration. I do not accept an apology unless it comes with a change of behavior. That was something my father shared with my sister when we were growing up. Do not say I'm sorry. That's cheap. Those are words. If the apology comes with a change of behavior, I will accept the apology. And I wish that we had students here to really get a learning moment, a teaching moment, and I hope some of the parents and some of the residents take that with them and do some teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Not here. Okay. Just look down. I'm gonna mess up the first name, I'm sorry, but I think it's Abrina Kayajan, maybe? Am I any close? Not here?
I'm here.
Oh, are here, okay. Was I close on the name? My apologies.
That's okay. Hello, and this is my second time doing this in front of any committee. When I read the news of the reversal, there was another meeting that I spoke at. I have an accent. I come from Belarus. My entire childhood is filled with memories of similar incidents, whether they were met as them or not, with racial slurs, with physical actions such as metal rods, separations on my face that were someone else's, parents standing nearby and cheering. I'm here like Mrs. Berman who had to leave. She's from Ukraine, I'm from Belarus. There was a time where my son, I thought, was the only Jewish boy in William Windsor many years ago, and I remember a former administrator telling me that he's truant and that they take him out for too many Jewish holidays. Make long story short, he is homeschooled also because he's twice exceptional, and he was telling me as this unfolds, because even when I tried to stop him from the news, he still reads it, and he told me, you know what, Mom? I know who I am. I know I'm Jewish. I'm not ashamed to be Jewish, but if I do go to the school or anywhere in the world, I will never admit that I'm Jewish. And when things are like this, tolerate it, and at first, you guys do the right thing, even though I want to see the video, but I understand these are minors. When you do something like this and you give the consequences and you take them away, I mean toddlers and teenagers, they need consequences. That's how they learn, and they also need education. And one of the thoughts that I personally had, and Adam was here, but he also left because he was literally shaking from anxiety. One of the thoughts that I had, why not a theater department put on Leopold's Tale for their play and cast these children in these roles so they understand a little bit more what transpired, why so many people of my extended community are here right now, and why they're upset, you know? There was one situation not too long ago, a personal situation where I live, where my son was called the N-word about 30 times, and he didn't respond, he knew not to, because he had only one incident in camp where he said the wrong word and he was schooled about it, so he didn't respond. He didn't wanna be that kid. As a result, he said stop because he got annoyed, and, you know, he received whatever the other kid did through his face. But he had integrity, and he is only 15 right now, the kid was 17 to my knowledge. So I just, you know, each action has a reaction. We should teach the kids that. We should teach the parents that the children learn from them. And when I was commenting, like, this has been very, very disturbing situation. I tried to counter comment, I tried to educate on all the Facebook posts and whatever. I got smileys from people who thought this was a laughing matter, probably some fake accounts that were made. I screenshot everything to educate people that this is not okay, this is not a laughing matter. Maybe this is a matter to be, you know, to have people educate, to talk, to come together. Sort of same thing that was happening at Brown many years ago when it was the African-Americans standing up for themselves, you know? They brought in a caligum, and they saw, you know, these are real people. They can be also very intelligent, just like us, and so friendships were formed instead of all this. But from my significant other, who brought my son briefly and read this little paper, he said whoever wrote this, this doesn't make any sense. It just says that they have been tolerating bullying here, and what is the purpose of this? What is the purpose of locking the door? I mean, like, there can be get-together, there can be a game they play, much more peaceful, you know? Much more integrity to it, much more respect. And I do hope that, you know, either Leopold's Tale or Parade you guys consider as one of the shows that you do, as well as the Sandra Bornstein museum that I need to visit again because I visited it in my youth previously when it was located at a different part of the JCC. You know, I would suggest if parents of these kids can afford, that they take them to Washington, DC as well, if possible. I don't even know if my five minutes are up, but I, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. I really appreciate everybody's patience, and I know it's not an easy topic. Superintendent Bartz wanted to make a statement this time, and this is my fault for being at the end. I take full responsibility. I missed it earlier on when I was gonna have it brought up, so blame me if you need to.
Just very briefly, if everyone, and very powerful statements were made tonight, I just want to begin by acknowledging the concern and the emotion that the situation has caused in our community. As superintendent, I care deeply about our students, our families, our community. There is no place for antisemitism, for hatred, for discrimination in our schools, in our sports, in any of our programming. I fully welcome the committee's review and investigation of this matter to ensure that every action taken has been appropriate and aligned with policies and a commitment to student safety and accountability. Unfortunately, there's been some information and facts and details around this incident that we have not been able to share due to privacy. I know how much this community cares about our schools. I share that commitment. I want us to work certainly with the committee, with our community, in terms of healing and leading us forward with all students. Thank you.
That concludes the meeting. We will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you for your attendance, patience, and everything.
But why did you vote for this, you know, outside party to vote for this investigation? Tell me about what, what did that decision?
Well, it's actually our, because we need somebody to look at it. It's our attorney that's gonna be looking at it. We're gonna be going into the details, something that, you know, we can't necessarily get at in a second session, but we have some constraints. But they can, they can go in and talk to whoever they need to talk to and get more information back to us.
So this is the school committee's attorney?
Exactly. Right.
And can you tell us anymore about what was discussed in executive session?
Not really. I just gave you what we did. Went from the beginning to the end, and looked at everything and asked questions.
And what about the players being put back on the team? Can you comment on that? Are they back on the team?
Nope. Can't comment on any of the stuff that has to do with.
How long will this investigation take?
That's a good question. Probably won't be in touch with the attorney in the next couple of days to see how. We'll hope to wrap it up soon, though. Thank you.
So it's Mr. Cluff that's gonna be conducting the investigation?
Well, it's his firm. That's the firm that he works for, not necessarily.
And what's the timetable for the investigation?
That part I don't have right now.
And you were criticized for not saying that it was an antisemitic incident tonight. What's your response? Why didn't you?
Because I talk about what we actually looked at. I didn't mention the actual antisemit part. That is, I don't know why I didn't say it. I put what we were going to actually look for, and I said we're gonna deal with education and deal with acceptance and inclusion. I think that picks a lot of things.
Is it an antisemitic incident? Would you refer to it as an antisemitic hazing?
At this point, I'm not gonna make a comment on that.
Do you still have confidence in the superintendent?
I'm not gonna make a comment on that either.
Do we know why the students were reinstated? Did you learn that tonight?
No, I think, and we have ideas. They're all in executive session because they're all student discipline-type things, so I can't talk about any of that either. I wish I could talk about more, but I can't.
But it was based on the appeal by the players' parents?
There is an appeal, and that's basically what turned the things around.
And did the superintendent explain why she made that decision to change the discipline?
They went into some of the factors that went into that, which again is personal. Can you give us an idea of?
What did this kill entail? Why were they allowed back on the team?
That part I can't tell you. It's all, that's all student discipline, and I can't talk to you. I wish I could, but I can't.
What exactly have you asked the firm to investigate?
Investigate exactly how the entire situation was handled from start to finish.
And how about the initial occurrence? Is there uncertainty about what happened?
No, that part I think we're pretty confident in as to what happened. That's why I went out and I made the statement that I don't care what you'd wanna call it, it shouldn't have happened.
Right, but will you be releasing the results of the investigation of that incident rather than the discussion of the aftermath?
When our investigation is done, the parts that can be released will be released, the parts that can't be released.
Schools around the state have very strict, no-tolerance, anti-hazing, anti-bullying policies. Even if this weren't an antisemitic incident, shouldn't the students have been dismissed summarily just for violating at the most basic level?
No, if you look at our, if you look at our policy, no. There's a, there's a spectrum that they can, they can give.
Is that your subject of attention now, given the experience here?
Well, I'm gonna let that take a little bit of a rest after all of the information we have, because if I were to go in and say we're gonna change policies and we don't have all the full information, I don't think that's the prudent thing to do. We'll wait till we have more information. In terms of reviewing policies, I would say into the new year, we probably will at some point.
What was the thought process in not having a more absolute anti-bullying process around the state? You're clearly out of the norm there.
Well, no, our process follows, when they put that together, follows a lot of the other policies in other districts. In fact, I think they pulled it up from other districts way back when they put it in. So, I'd like to answer more, but right now.
One more thing. What thought have you given to an independent investigation as opposed to a firm where someone who is so deeply engaged in the school committee is involved in?